And the call this committee of the wall meeting for order for August fifteen thousand twenty-two at seventeen. Let's recognize that we're in driving land. Homeland of the nature, nature, ways of prenation and. Traditional land of the nature ways of prenation homeland to the making. Thank you very much and that we're all treating. They have an approval of the agenda. Those girls, we're setting Maryland, Mark, all in favor. Very. Next, we have a presentation from the vertical printing book. Would you like to step up and they introduce all rules with you on behalf of the printing?
Thank you, Mary. I've got Paul Sutherland, our facility chair for the Burger Company. And we have a couple of members in the gallery from the executive as well.
Yeah. Basically, we give you ten minutes and let's hear your story.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for allowing us to make a presentation. As you know, the current club has been in existence in Thompson for quite a number of years. You've all got a copy of the presentation, so I'm not going to go through it in great detail, except to. To let you know that the curling club was built by volunteers in nineteen seventy, the new facility was built in nineteen seventy-eight. With volunteers and rat funding and then the facility itself was turned over to the city. The building and contents are basically owned by the city and the operation of the current office was done by a volunteer board. Interesting to note that the curling bug runs programs that are free of charge for seniors. For school district, Mr. Chris relate, for example, the. The high school as a regular lead classes in the winter time in our facility at no cost. Couple of the schools have you so the for the set classes from elementary schools and. And we run some learn to grow programs in the fall that are free of charge to anybody that wants to participate. We have men's and ladies and mixed programming going on in the bulk. We also have doubles program and probably more importantly, we run programs for children. Little our little rocks program and our junior program are run by our. Some of the benefits of curling. You know, we were, we're probably about anything that has provided a pretty safe environment. Fun environment for healthy recreation, socializing. We also. Provide rental opportunities for. For people that want to use the facility, whether it's the ice service or. The bond skills or whether it's the lounge for for parties for. Birthday parties for kids and so on. We also have posted a number of regional and provincial events. Which provide significant economic benefits to local businesses and allow us to showcase our hospitality here in the city of Thompson. And of course, that includes the key tourism benefits that showcases the community at large. And finally, on that, on that note is program development, we're pretty rough. That kind of fits right in with the city of Thompson's community safety and well-being plan by providing both the cost of recreation. Some of the past events that we posted. That have had very significant impacts both locally, regionally and provincially. Are listed here for you. From mixed provincials on to men's and ladies. Man, total winter games a couple of times. And also, we are, we were awarded as a host. For the two thousand and twenty-three Masters Women's and Men's Provincial to be held in in March. So. Just to expand a little bit on, on, on the hosting aspect. There's a bit of an example there that kind of highlights the financial benefit of hosting. A major event and I just based this on some. Estimates that have been used in the past for hosting events. I know that. The regional. Games that were held a number of years ago. Study was done by the city of Thompson and they used. The dollar spent with the multiplier of that. Four times new, new money coming into the community and in our example here with regards to the master of provincials. That multiplier effect translates until four hundred thousand dollars economic spin off for the city. So I mean, really, that's. Forty-four thousand in new money coming into the community and then it's spent over a number of times within the community. Our club is run, the programming is run primarily. Through volunteer. Volunteer effort. This gives you a bit of an idea, the slide gives you a bit of an idea as to the number of hours and this is a very rough figure. It's probably quite, quite a bit low, but it gives you an idea of some of the. Total number hours and we were talking here in excess of probably fourteen hundred dollars put in by volunteers. To run the programs of the perfect book and to maintain the facility in order to to run our programs. It's pretty significant amount of hours, which. Are is donated labor pretty much. If you look at the slide that that compares our operating boss. It'll show that the changes over the, over the last. Five years with respect to our budget revenues and our expenses. And of course, one of the reasons why we're here today is to discuss. There is to present to you a request to to have a look at. Couple of our expenses that have a significant impact on our ability to continue. In the programs of the permanent problem and and this slide kind of depicts some of the changes that are occurring. And the ones that are highlighted on the next slide. They've broken down excluding the. The COVID year. Utility costs are highlighted. And the reason for that, of course, is because we wanted to highlight some of the things that we've done. With respect, and we wanted to highlight the cost, the impact that has on our budget. That's hydro gas and water and sewer. And just a note with regards to the decrease in hydro cost, one of the main reasons for the decrease in the hydro cost was. We switched over from burning vapor light in two thousand and eighteen to. To LED light. For which we got a graph from hydro to do and they provide a significant. Decrease and and cost. Some of the other costs that are perhaps not as easily shown in the previous slides. Or the staff costs, which. Pretty much a month that donated. Labor particularly with regards to the ice makers and installing the ice, but it just gives you an idea of what. What we pay, we have. Our ice makers paid seven hundred fifty dollars a week for twenty to thirty hours a week. Which includes making the ice or maintaining the ice, I should say, and and doing the the janitorial work in the club as well. We have our staff. We hire a bartender. That which we pay just over the wage. And she currently has approximately twenty hours a week plus. It's extra hours when you have special. And then the other major cost. That we actually put out for with three guys, the ice is there, he paid individual to install the ice ball. And that will cost about fifteen hundred dollars. Some of the costs that we're looking at. In the future. Are going to be probably in excess of two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars capital expenditures. And this, this is just an estimate at this point, because these are things that we that we're anticipating. We're gonna have to look at. And they're pretty well self-explanatory. With regards to what we would like to replace the gas versus to switch it over to electric that is cheaper. Two of our furnaces are scheduled for replacement. They were scheduled to replace with two years ago. And we managed to keep them growing and they're still going, so. We might be okay to have a couple of years, but I'm, I suspect that we'll have to do something within the next five years. And these other costs are are pretty self-explanatory. Current issues that we have. That that and obviously that's the main reason why we're here is the insurance cost. We currently have outstanding invoices with the city for insurance for over forty thousand dollars. And that's a cost that would. Dramatically impact whether or not. You know, we'd have to look at other ways of generating these resources. We've, our revenue has reduced, been reduced over the past four or five years. By about fifteen thousand dollars and. We have actually increased our membership. I'm on solo that period and we have to be a little bit careful with. The increasing membership just because. It's may cause us to lose more members than it's worth, so. It's a consideration that we're going to be discussing at our next board meetings in January. And. And then you the utility costs. I think everybody's aware that utility plus. All at home and for our businesses are have increased dramatically over the last few years and that's, that's impacting us as well. So the facts for for us to consider is, first of all, the rural current levels of city facility. We did get a private insurance for the burger burning above a couple of years ago. And that amount was significant less than what the city is currently playing currently paying through AMM. Actually, more than fifty percent. It'd be interesting to see how the insurance cost calculations made to arrive at the amount that we're being. And given that the BCC is a city facility. We have think that this maybe it's a city responsibility and insurance and some of the utility costs. Check through the water until. So we're asking that the city of Thompson not charge us for insurance and. Water and utility cost. And also look at revising the formal agreement with the city of Thompson. We did have a written agreement right from the time that the burning club. Existed up until February, while it was renewed twice the last time was ninety-eight. And expired February twenty, two thousand and eighteen and it's something that, you know, we, we've discussed. A couple of times with city administration and then COVID kind of got in the way. So it's kind of put on the back burner. Possible outcomes pending your decision is. The program continues to operate the facility, no charge for insurance and water. The word we're growing the love continuing to operate per facility, no charge for insurance. Or the burning club turning over the operation of the current facility in the city of Thompson. And quite frankly, the, the last. Point is probably not one that you guys really want. And and I, and I know we really don't want that either, because I know it would be a real challenge. For municipality to take on. And then the last slide is just I threw that in because. We're hosting the provincials in two thousand and twenty-three in March and would like. One of the multi-purpose of TRCC for preuses of it for us for current amount of total staff, umpires and law teams. As in kind support for that. And I'm, we're quite open to questions if you have any. I'd like to thank you again for listening, appreciate the opportunity to present this to you and. Look forward to more communication in the future. Thank you.
I still want a clarification because one of the slide talk about insurance, I thought every year we funded for issues, you know. Also caution.
I believe previous councils have put us about fifty percent of the insurance was paid by the city and fifty percent of the insurance was paid by.
Just a clarification.
First of all, let me thank you for your presentation and it's really nice to see both of you still in town. I mean, that's I certainly noticed that. As people leave, we're losing that volunteer base. That's really all I'm going to go about what's available in Thompson. I really miss it. You had mentioned something that was my interest, so I'm going to ask for a clarification. You had indicated that you were not all that keen on seeking more members because you might lose more members than you gain. I'm curious what. What that that certainly one didn't say that we want seeking to reduce the membership. We were, we didn't want to increase the fees. That's what energy is going to clarify the contract thinking of the fees.
Anything else?
No, it's, thank you, yeah.
Just thinking about a mayor, thank you for something as well. I took time on the meeting and went through the whole presentation. I think I've ended early, twelve, maybe three times in my life, but forty-three years, but I think curling is great to tell that about. It's something we need in Thompson along with a swimming pool and many other things. So when I read true and I'm trying to understand the dilemma that you find yourself in. A couple of things came out, for example, the insurance, does that cover the billing and equipment or just the billing bolt, right?
Yeah, and, and live bill and liability and.
There was no, oh, yeah, and, and I was a little, and I heard what you said, but I was a little taken back being a person that had been negotiating all his career. That you don't have a contract since two thousand and eighteen. I'm going to leave that alone now, but it was troubling for me to hear that because. I, I can't remember. It may have come to us, but I can't remember if it did or not.
I can address that, yeah. So we started starting to go shooting with the current ball in twenty eighteen, so there's a number of discussions. As the pandemic progressed, so as we started to make some decisions on what they wanted to be responsible for and what. I think it was brought to committee at one point to have a discussion. The pandemic started, the current club kind of shut down. There wasn't much happening there, so it kind of sat on the back burner. Once the club started to re-inmigrate itself, the meeting started to be held again to get the contract up.
But we continue and certainly as a finance person myself, I've looked at the figures and, and I thought first, is it a pandemic? You know, we know the first things I thought, then I went back at the five years and realized you've been losing money for a while. So I certainly for one would, would, would be willing to sit down and look at what we can do. I don't think the third bullet is an option. I'll say that level there. It's not an option. It's not an option that the curling club in Thompson will be shut down either. So I think we need to get our ads on. I don't know what that means right now, but I really do believe that we need to work with the organization to see what we can to get. Curling club doesn't belong just to the current, it belongs to the whole community. And for us to make it work, I really think we need to put our ends together and understand what that means for you. And certainly, the, the forty thousand dollars that's owing to the city, I look back and I looked at. In, in twenty twenty-one, your, your revenue was only sixty thousand and, and expenses was seventy-seven. I can see why you didn't pay the forty thousand dollars for all your expense now a little bit, a little bit more, so.
Just, just to note, I'm sorry to drop last is, is the, is that forty thousand is, I think it's three or four years worth of insurance. It's not just one year.
But anyway, I, again, to, to follow us the fire marks, I encourage you, Kane, sometimes organizations just. Trolls, I don't see if we're done a lot of the way. I have not heard that from you tonight. I believe what I'm hearing and I like the part about the older people continuing volunteering, I think for the last time, I agree myself. That we, we, we don't want to give up, but I want to encourage you, stay with it, and I'm sure that we as responsible council will do the right thing.
Right?
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate all you're doing. The. The culture awkward set, it's a city thing and you know, I hope that we go on concert. While we're on our stock and work with you and figure out how we can do this, but there are things that we do in the city. We have infrastructure. We have all those other things that we do and we provide TRCC and it costs us a lot of money, a lot more than what we make. And the volunteers that are running it's run by most volunteer. The service and provided the exercise provided the minutes, but it's right from the little little rocks. When the oldest one is right now. I've been great, so. It provides exercise for people. Low cost. Appreciate all the work that we can. Yeah, thanks. Just more question. There was a mention of the insurance with regards to AMM. At fifty percent of the rate that I believe if a curling club is paying. With us paying fifty percent, or I don't know if we're doing that now, but we weren't paying fifty percent. Is that of the AMM rates or the rate they're currently paying? Because it seems to me if we can get it, and I'm not sure that we can, but if we can. Then it's not going to cost the city any money in order to get full insurance to be. Don't quite fall, so. All of our facilities are covered under the same blanket insurance that is to the AMM, so this facility as a city-owned building is also covered under that. And then there's a portion of the amount that has been built to the current call for that facility. So there was a slide there with regards to insurance and I had AMM on it at fifty percent of the rate. So whatever the allocation is for that building under our insurance clause, fifty percent of that bill has been traditionally sent to the current club. Eric, you can move on. Sorry, I must say this understood, but. It was clear as day in the presentation that the AMM rate would result in fifty-five. Yes, the facts to consider slide.
And get the movie clear now on that. Did you want to comment?
Well, Jeff, I might be, if I might help to clarify that, EMM. Has an insurance plan that city has, they have to have. And the current club in a city facility is covered under their plan, so a portion of what the city pays for all their insurance. Is allocated to the curling bug and then that portion is the, the city charges us fifty percent of what that calculation is. And we're not sure all that's aligned then. So it was the private insurance that was fifty percent cheaper? Yes, yes. Because I, I got a quote from, from the. Sure, that does turning bucks and recreation facilities and that's, that was. That's where that fifty percent cheaper than EMM costs.
Thanks, Madam. Before I go to you guys, I had one more credit patient because I look at the slide and then I look at the income statement. So you stay there, insurance is ten, you said we find half of it. The regulation is like we, every year we think of eight thousand dollars to us to for insurance curling club. So is that mean the issue is sixteen thousand dollars?
I confuse you right now. I'm looking at the books. I don't recollect what our yearly insurance allocations as a city. But the bills that were shown to me by the club are roughly twelve thousand a year. The last one was fourteen and change. So then half, half would be, it would be here or double that would be twenty, twenty-eight thousand.
Duncan, I think that when we were on city council before like our last term is the goal for about eight to nine thousand they vary. So that could have been half, but that it would come forward as to what we were going to pay that year. So what was half sixteen thousand days to pay date needed payment. And then the insurance has priest over the years.
Anyway.
So I can, I can, we can assemble the bills.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense when I look at the number, it just show, you say ten thousand here because you have. Two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two, every year you put ten thousand as a insurance. But two thousand nineteen and twenty-zero, I don't know why, and then twenty, twenty-one is ten and twenty-one, twenty-two, zero. But anyway, we, we go to, I'm going to ask that they go on from, from internally. But anyway, thank you for coming to show us. At least I can see the picture. So when you, when you propose, propose the. The possible moving forward. The outcome is like no charge for the insurance and the water, right? Is that what your proposal or just the insurance? Or turn it back to the city, right? There's a tree option right here.
Well, that's the ones that I'm just stating in our, in the presentation. There may be other options, but these are the possible outcomes that, that we've considered or we thought about. And. Yeah, the first one obviously is, is for the city not, not to bill us at all for insurance and water. The second one is not charging us for insurance and the third one was you guys can run and operate the facility on your own.
Again, I'm sorry, I'm a number person and I look at your statement. So the water is about thirty-three hundred bucks a year, yeah, cost you guys from the city. And. When I look at your books based on the income statement. Even if say we do happen to be, I'm not saying, I'm suggesting we are going to, but I'm just saying this possibility. Even if say we do happen to be, I'm not saying, I'm suggesting we are going to, but I'm just saying this possibility. So with with the ten thousand, based on your book says ten thousand is insurance, and the utility water is thirteen thousand dollars. So your profit will be, your your loss, your loss is seven thousand dollars last year. So when I look at your loss, it's not like a huge amount of loss. So. To me, it it is is possible, is doable. But again, I I think somehow there's some number that is not matching because of what I know that we funded, it's not matching. Which are income statement, again, I'm not trying to pick a most thing, but I'm just mainly look at your, your income statement. Is it possible to do it such a way that you proposed the first two items? Right, so I'm just looking at that as a perspective. So anyway, that that's, uh, that's my my comment, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just want to call, uh, for, and. Do they have to use AMM insurance? If they're going.
All of our facilities are covered under the insurance of the city's trouble, so that's, it's part of the AMM. Everything's under that, so we've kind of asked, could we take a certain facility out, it doesn't look that way.
Okay, so that's not even.
That was some of the discussions that we had in twenty eighteen, because, um, they brought four quotes, so we explored that with AMM at the time. And.
Okay, thank you, wouldn't have been a huge.
Wow, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it, I first drove now facility forty five years ago, so. Uh, definitely been near dear, my children, grandchildren have all proven there, so. We'll definitely work on seeing how we can definitely keep it open. We will definitely have further discussions on this, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for your time, have a good evening.
You could stay for the meeting. Next, we're moving on to community comments and feedback.
On my track twenty eighth street, I have thought several questions on the. Uh, check register. Uh, like to what did we say there for, uh, zero zero three four seven oh nine, in the amount of nine thousand three hundred ninety five dollars and forty four cents? Okay, next, zero zero three four seven zero seven. In the amount of four thousand one hundred and eight dollars and one point four cents. Next one is zero zero three four seven six zero. In the amount of one hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, four hundred and four and sixty four cents. And that is a stamp check, I assume it's something to do with the new aquatic facility.
Yeah, I can confirm that that is part of the progress payment towards the pool's design, engineering.
Can I find out how much is already paid out towards that design? And finally, zero zero three four seven two four. A check for, uh, both around an ink for twenty five hundred dollars, what was that for?
It would have been for entertainers at Canada Day.
Canada Day.
They made provided entertainers, sir. Okay, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
We're saying that it's for Canada Day.
Okay. And, uh. Is it possible to have the answers to the other questions at the next regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, did you have your number?
I didn't remember, thank you, uh, last meeting of the, the committee of the whole meeting we had. Uh, I have raised the question above. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's on my answer that you just haven't had a chance, so, uh.
Okay, let's finish first asking, we have. Any other, uh, comments, community feedback? From the audience? And for a third time, any more comments? Community feedback. Seeing now, and thank you.
Yeah, this is a response to the previous question that was asked about the lots north of the river. Um, looking to this further, the status is that the city has to file some paperwork. Um, to have the roads realigned and be engineered by the province. So that's really the status of where that project is, is that you can't really get any of the lots off of the. New roads that are planning the development, it's also realignments are out. The discussions we're going to have with the provinces, could some of the development exit, uh, happen on the existing roads? Uh, to allow some of that to move forward, so that would be the next set of discussions we have with them. But, uh, the group is working with magical infrastructure. Uh, we hope that the consultant that had done the drawings would have completed some of that, and that wasn't done, so. That is part of all the work that's being done at the CDC, so we've had a first meeting with their new executive director. Kind of discussed what needs to be done and how we best project for it.
Uh, just making sure that included all of the questions that Mr. Orbiter had, because again, these are his questions.
Um, so most of his others were recommendations to council. Um, and I've spoken with Mr. Orbiter about this, and I actually have to give his wife a call, well, she's not in this, thank you very much.
Seeing no more comments, we're going to report, uh, to July track registers. Can you have any comments? Council, any questions, comments?
One of the invoice, what invoice, check number is zero zero three four seven four five. To the MTS, eight thousand fifty two dollars and forty one cents, I wonder what is that for? This is the monthly, uh, expenses for cell phone and phone line. And the same is the number of, uh, zero zero three four seven zero nine. Nine thousand three hundred ninety five and fifty four cents, can we have, uh, break down invoice if let's say that is. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, uh, plus?
Yeah, I I know what it's for. It's, uh, zero zero three four seven oh two for line painting. I thought we had issues with some of the line painting this year. Was there not some issues? When it came in and sprayed, and is that our own line painters, that the streets, the old stuff, the white stuff, what is it? I remember they were painting over sand and everything else, they're supposed to come back and fix it.
Yeah, I recognize interesting.
Yeah. So I'm wondering why, let's ask the question, we pay an invite, we haven't got the product delivered like it should have been. There's just a question, I I don't know if they come back or not.
I'll have to call up and see if there's deficiencies in this, that's been created. Okay, so I'll put that as an action for myself to call, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving to. To financials. Jenny?
This is the, the first week of the year, we expect fifty percent of our reason. Uh, the tax will coming, I don't get until July, they just got out of the last. As well, the each government report. Uh, like, by, by you, uh, budget, uh, some of those are annually. Uh, there is government of little plans, the, the license of little, and as of the year is one five five. And the taxi transfers are about five, uh, billing from the start of the mission here. Uh, the servant really many of that, there was one large line bill revenue this year, uh, compared to it's one of. Uh, over twenty thousand dollars, that's, that would be a fun, I know. Uh, rental. It's really showing a large discrepancy, um, other revenues for some of the capital project haven't been received yet, that category. Uh, there's really no major concerns, truly a timing issue. Other grounds to the large, you know, that's probably, none of the I P grounds. Uh, there's, that's, you know, we are, we are, we are, we are operating. Uh, the revenues are on track. The combination tax. And then transfer. From the reserve, it's really being capital, work of the stand that will be transferred. Uh, under, uh, uh, overall, it's a little, uh, really due to large number of things that were done experiencing in the city. Uh, we have a receiving feature, so we keep them, so the numbers that, uh, report are based on their forecasting number. Uh, we should be getting that normally, so that we should be getting that shortly. Um, and in perfect case. The people that are soon to have, we started yet, so there's, uh, that will show, show them as well. So again, there's no concern, the expenses really doesn't actually fall through the, 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 the. But with the utility. Uh, getting utility running that, they'll just cut up the last two. As that's already watching here, they sense there's lately older, uh, but they're expecting to be on track, first by the end of the year with, uh. The elimination that we've tried to keep the college.
Also.
Yeah, it's really not to do with the court as much as this with the tax bill that went out, and people have been getting texts, and we get phone calls of the rates going up like their, their tax bill has gone up. And so I've been referring to the the assessment branch, because I believe that's where it belongs to. But I think that we should be, if we haven't done already, it might be nice to send something out through communications explaining that. So that your office don't get bombarded with a million calls thinking that the tax went up. Quite a bit for some people, which it actually was the assessment itself that. Thank you.
And there was a small change in the, in the school tax.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions? Thank you. Anything? Uh, next for recreation community services. Uh, the recreational community service report. Sony?
Well, over the public safety section first, um, when it's when we actually see the device of recreation, um, break them off a little bit. So the licensing department right now currently working on a pilot project. Um, see if we can get audio installed to the taxi, um, ads. Um, again, it's just a pilot thing that I'm looking at right now and I have plenty of people to be there. Figured it can work in the industry to see if that's something that the state is doing, um, and it's for safety for them. Um, the bylaw enforcement, I've got staffs included here for your review. Um, they seem to be consistent with other years, um. Yeah, this one has some instances when it comes to complaints that are coming in. Under civic addressing, the those that we told from the major in July, we'll be following the seventeenth nineteen, those are more or less complaints that are coming in from neighbors. Say that the neighbor has grass or their trees and peeing on or going onto their properties. Uh, be those types of complaints. Um, our mobile signs are consistent, um, they've been since several years since our um, grass and weeds again when the summer months, so we're getting a lot of complaints coming in during the summer months for that. Um, parked on the street on a barbecue day, they've been consistent all year. We got a little bit more, I think, in the summer months, people just um, and uh, highlight, we have thirty-two of the seventy-eight, um, identified derelict vehicles that were in the city, so we only have thirty-two left. Um, so right now, we're probably not, we're going to, we're going to be giving them, uh, letters. And we received no reply by, uh, this week, we're going to start with, uh, having them towed to the public brochure. We have to keep them forty-five days before we can do anything with them before we can destroy them. Um, so there would be a cost to the city, um, should be towed to the vehicle. Uh, roughly about eighty dollars per vehicle, so somewhere around twenty-five per college, well, thirty-two, we had the total of thirty-two. And we can invoice, um, the homeowners at that point, invoice them the cost, rather than taking them. And then when we do get them destroyed, there is no cost to the city, so the dealership or the organizational appointment will be the minimum cost. Uh, the animal control stats, that position currently is vacant, um, so the bylaw inspector is currently assisting um, that position until it's filled. Um, and you'll notice I've attached that as well, or the uncontrolled. Um, our numbers. For somebody doing two jobs, I think they're actually pretty good, um, pretty high for when he's able to take care of. I think in July, when we had thirty-eight animals that were picked up, so there's quite a background with your point why there. Um, and then in the community safety or CSOs, um, I've attached the desk for a major in July. For open liquor, you can tell that the numbers have gone up. Uh, of what they're disposing. And then the individuals that they're lodging at our C and P as well as those that are transporting home. Um, it says that the numbers that are transferring home is higher than what they're actually lodging at the, um, the R C and P. Which is not programmed, but programmed sound of him first trying to find an alternative other than lodging in that detachment. Um, so whether that's taking somebody to the hospital, bringing somebody home back to the Y, to the longer shelters, nine five three. Um, so those are, those numbers are are higher, which is if it's where you can see us before. It's not clear of that, is any question? Number one recreation. Our market. I can move on to recreation.
Oh, that's recreational inspection and enforcement.
Yeah, so that would be the stats for the file.
Yeah.
So I can move on to the recreation section. Um, ISIS installed and camp started today. Uh, the ISIS and the C A, the G D will be going in in September. Um, that could be events that are taking place end of July into August. Um, we, uh, removed all the trophies and the items that were over at the month by school, they've all been taken down from the two inch one D case at the T R C C. Um, and letters were sent there, we're trying to do something to beautify or bring some recognition to the organization that actually uses the T R C C. So we sent letters out to all the organizations asking that they wanted to create their own banners, the street banner. Um, and then we put all of their banners, the logos, all of the, all along U C and J. Um, at no cost other than them purchasing it, uh, we would put it up for them and it can stay out here around, so there'd be no advertising costs for them. It's also the non-profit, um, organization, so, um, there's seventeen light standards that we have that we can put here, uh, um, banners upon. And we're also going to be putting some banners up that, uh, in the parking lot, which were like standards in the parking lots, we're going to place some of the video constant banners up in that parking lot. Um, we're going to remove the deck, oh, that's currently on the gym, um, it's peeling right now, so that's going to be removed. Um, um, don't believe we're going to be able to get or replace this year, it needs to be done in the summer months, so it'll probably be next year, but it is peeling pretty bad. Um, so we're going to replace that and also taking down the electronic sign. That was on the box set on the corner of the drive, and you see a dress that's been removed. Um, and we're going to be giving options for a grant to replace that. And for the pool, we received a ninety-nine set drawings from Santa. And we're going to be moving them on Thursday, this Thursday to you. Thank you. On fire birthday.
I gotta ask this question because I get cornered to ask this before, so I'd like to go with the result. My senior report, uh, Sonya, you said continue to work on the game room. Unfortunately, due to staffing, we have not been able to open, not even a day.
No, but I do have an update, we're able to, um, for the ghost, we actually do have staff for this Wednesday. So I'm hoping to get over there tomorrow, um, and get it all, open up on the advertising tomorrow, so I want to shorten it, but we're able to get that and be able to from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I think you see. The T R C is not open on weekends, um, we don't have, uh, an IP when they're on, you can get a hold of it.
Yes.
On the ice side, yes, sorry, the ice side, we can't have open, we have that on my field here. So the game room cannot be opened unless it's my field. Because there's ice and water, you know. It affects all hosts outside.
So to be fair to say that, so all the effort, I have no result yet. Another, I have another thing about the, uh, the now. The notice that you you got put up for the public about T R C closing. I think it's Facebook or social media, whatever, right? So I have people ask me about why using the winter picture. It's not as. So anyway, that's just a small little thing, just to make sure that there's no reason for us to get this kind of complaint, this, I know it's nothing important, but just to point it out to you. And I will, I will stop, thank you.
Thank you. I'll start.
Uh, you beat up at home for us, let alone in the public. Can someone in this room, that's on council administration, I'd be clear about that, tell me when we're going to fix the block code.
So there's currently fixing it right now, so you'll see that there's a gray electrical panel, they've been here last week, this week, they poured the concrete panel, panels in place now, it's again, and they were wired each day. So this was part of insurance claim. And that's, it's very close.
I almost was going to double the batteries to try and.
Have a look as you leave, uh, so.
They've been working on it for the last couple.
Like, and I made a, made a slight adjustment, so the original was a, was another shock. And after discussions and issues, we decided against that. Well, there now is this parking lot post, covered with supply chain charges, but I'm hoping by the end of the week. When the issue. Don't have to.
I get lots of questions, but I'm not. Anybody else? Or call, Brad.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, uh, first, kudos for the follow-up on the derelict vehicle campaign, uh, we've been talking about that for a little while. My first question is, uh, for the open liquor, the three hundred and the five hundred plus and six hundred, almost seven hundred, those are, those are confiscations, no accompanying fines or anything like that, is that correct?
That's correct, Council.
Okay, um, just confirming, and I, I'm curious, what is civic addressing for twelve instances, seventeen instances, nineteen instances? Um, that can, uh, our director elaborate on that a little bit, or Matt City Manager, or whoever?
I can address that, this, under the bylaw, each home is required, each business is required to have, um, numbers, so that the fire department or police can identify the address of that property. So if there's no civic addressing, oh, no?
No, that's, that's, sorry, no, that's actually not what you have that for, the stat, the civic addressing would be any citizen that are complaining about their neighbor, so if you're so-and-so is blowing their snow around my property, or your tree is leaning over on my property, so those are just complaints that come in from the citizens, um, that he deals with.
Okay, just curious as to what that line was, thanks for clearing that up. Um, and just finally, it's just, I see one instance is of urinating, defecating, that's um, I would, you know, venture to say low based on from what, you know, I see and people see, and, um, I know that some of the other stats are captured with the CSOs and R C and P, but if we look at, say, the, the, the one instance of that, and no instances of shopping cart concerns, but they're kind of littered everywhere, used as kind of coffee tables and such. Um, are those concerns would need to be brought forward by the business owners themselves for that private property?
Uh, if, if, we only have one inspector, so those stats that I presented are just from one, the one inspector, they're not in state's own track. So this would have been something that people have seen, it's only urinating is something that he saw. Um, and it may be addressed, um, with the traffic carts, carts, um, I can bring that up to him and ask him why there's nothing in there. About this council, and we'll follow up with that.
Yeah, yeah, and that, thank you, thank you for that, um, and just, I, I, I know that one bylaw inspector can only do so much, it's just as, as a city, we seems to, to go after more or less the low hanging fruit a little bit more with the vehicles parked on the road versus, uh, the public urination and, uh, stuff like that, which is probably more of a reason why people would, would not want to come and live in our town, or, or in fact leaving. Um, and I just wanted one final question, what about, uh, cannabis consumption, that, that's a provincial law that it can't be consumed in public, do we need to make a specific bylaw on our own books, or to enforce that?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, that's an interesting question, we would have to look into if our CSO are actually enabled to enforce that. Um, I've never had that discussion before, so we will look into that.
Okay, I think that's worthwhile with the third dispensary now operating, um, there's certainly, um, lots of smoke in the downtown at, at different times, so thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I know that we probably, I know that we've talked about this before, and I'm just, uh, uh, asking to have my memory refreshed, that's all, in the cases where probably almost all cases where, um, following up with fines is probably not practical, because you're not likely going to have an address or some issue like that. Is there not some means, or we did, we did look at uh, alternate means of, uh, quote unquote, justice in those cases. Uh, did we not, where the individual could potentially, uh, instead of find work, some type of community service?
There, there have been discussions about the fine auctions programs, it used to be called, right, so rather than paying a, uh, the dollar on fine, it was a community service. Um, we haven't quite got the full answer from the province, if that's still allowed. So that's something we can definitely follow up on, but it's been a while since I've had a discussion of the problem.
But we have been having, we have talked to the province about that, whether or not they do just in passing, uh, there was something about humorous issues and that, that was taken away in the first place.
I, I, I really believe in programs like that, I've seen it work in other places. It's hard to spit or urinate on stuff that you've already just cleaned it, like we have to clean again.
Okay, um, that's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so I understand, and I think councils have talked a bit about it in this room tonight. We are having CSOs, police officers, whoever dumping booze out. But there's no time. But if I was to go to our town tonight now, and say, I'm going to open the twenty-six, I'm going to step someone down there, will I get a fine? Last, wait, hang on a second, I'm at, will I get a fine? I shouldn't, would I, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back off. It was about five years ago, and I'll be quick about it. I asked a question to a previous mayor about open liquor in public, and I asked, and how many fines was given over that particular time by our CSOs in that particular time, it was three hundred, I said, how many was charged? He said, one person. I knew the events, we have to be very close, being blood. He got over three hundred dollar fine for that, and rightfully stole, let's be clear, he broke the law, there's the thing I got a problem. I know we've got short staff, I know we got this, we got, how do we change the behavior, there's no statistics, we, we have a six hundred dollar people, and I blame them, I'm just pointing it out there, they have to be taken or rip up the bylaw, because if it doesn't apply to all, what's it applies to? None of us. And I'm troubled that we got bylaws in Bates and Thompson, and it's almost like we pick and choose who we're going to enforce it with. It's got to stop. We've got to change the behavior, and it's a big problem, and you know what, a lot of people don't want to talk about it, but this is one council will talk about it, because my phone blown up on the weekend regarding someone cracking on someone's property, someone drinking booze in public is acting all the time, I can't tell you about our councils that are getting those calls. So I am, and text, some of them last year with your city manager, on the weekends, I know he's not working, I'll tweak a little stuff that's going on. So I'm saying, we as a city must change the way we add drink. And if it's a bylaw, then that lousy ticket needs to be written out, whether it's left or not. Anyway, I'm just a little off on the color with that tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, please, if you don't mind. I think there's something there for us to follow up on, I don't know what that is. Um, if that's lobbying, the province are trying to get a final answer out. Uh, sorry, uh, city manager, what did you call that program? The, uh, the fine options. Fine auctions. I, I think that, uh, we are not going to solve our problems downtown overnight, for sure, and that is one tool that seems to be removed from the toolbox that we could follow up on. And not everyone is capable of paying fines, and certainly, uh, I if there's some other means for them to pay it up, and that's reasonable. Um, and the fair way of dealing with the issue that councilor eligible. If I had to ask, that's a the city administration, look at that, get back to us.
Thank you, uh, fine options is always something that I, uh, figured that should work too, but it, it does take, I'm sticking with our community safety, well-being strategies, because there's been before, that could be a really fun of theirs, so. Okay, uh, move on. Very, we're good, too.
Hi, good evening, uh, so, um, we'll start off our responses from the end of, uh, getting, uh, why, so currently for the month, we had thirty-one power responses here, date being three hundred and sixteen. Uh, compared to twenty twenty-one, two hundred and seventy-nine, of the main reason, thirty-two point two-six percent. Uh, dollar loss is, uh, estimated at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's primarily due to the fire at forty-five percent of the night, Duke. Animals response for the month, um, currently we had six hundred and thirty-three calls here, eight, four thousand five hundred and forty-four. Uh, over twenty twenty-one, four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, increase of four point five percent, meaning overall revenue for the one of one hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, compared to. Yearning, one hundred and thirty thousand nine. Our inspection prevention program, uh, no inspections from July, year is fifteen. Inspections, uh, inspections were two for year date, and there is an amended, uh, of the both, five to thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight to nine thousand five. Uh, fire inspections for the month of July, we had twelve news, twelve new inspections, uh, nine renewals, January one thousand two hundred and five. Fifty, year date is twenty-six, we can also sixty-seven, four thousand two hundred and seven fifty. And year again, twenty-two, forty-six, two thousand two hundred and fifty. So it's, it's nice to see that homeowners are taking the, uh, the initiative about installing and, uh, following up on the, um, year.
Thank you. So, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I probably asked this question before, but since we don't have a venue, we didn't ask those questions, like you used to. I want to ask it again for clarification purposes, um, for two hundred and fifty per trip, like at two seventy-two, I understand that, but then you got two point seven five, if we're dating program, I mean, what is, is it federal eventual, or?
That's the cost difference between the province and the patient base, two fifty to two fifty. That came into effect a few years back. Um, spiritually, we like consternation, we've done, we've seen one of them, it's very big, one. You're using the average, you're using the standard. I think there do.
Yeah. So, so the two, so you got two seventy-two base at two fifty, get it? But are we actually charging two hundred and twenty-seven patients, and I'm sold, and I, at five hundred each? Are we doing that?
That would be considered, uh, in some of the trash, so that would be a library function.
Okay.
We do that part.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We got a question. Okay, seeing that, thank you very much, appreciate your reports.
Uh, I can make a couple comments about the reports, I remember, yeah, it's, you know, uh, see, I've been here today. It's been a while, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the mayor's report. So this is a report from July nineteenth to August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I attended and gave remarks at the youth field ceremony, which is July twenty-second. Along with the councilors Valentino, Long, Forward, Pro, found the city manager, Anthony McGinnis, we met the R C and P Thompson detachment in July twenty-fifth. Along with councilors, Cooper and Walk, a taxi commission meeting was held on July twenty-sixth, I was not at that meeting, I was actually, you know, that thing, I was not in attendance. Along with councilors Wong, with councillor Wong, we attended the Thompson seniors community, uh, resource council bike with us launch day. On July twenty-seventh, I got to ride a bike, I didn't. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we had a lunch meeting with Minister Vandell, and attended the meeting with Mister Vandell hosted by Prairie's County, obviously. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with Doctor Ariel Valley, and mayor and council, met with the Thompson senior, those Thompson Chamber of Commerce on August ten. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with Gary Annette from Ballet on August eleventh, and that ends my report. For this. Uh, councillor Elfrin.
On July the twenty-fifth, when you met with their C and P, correctly, if I'm wrong, that was at six o'clock, I believe, at five thirty-five to a weight recount meeting?
Yes.
I was on June that night. According to my notes, and I'm not, I was.
Okay, uh, Tommy will have that. Correct it. Also, Elfrin was all in for the R C and P meeting. Next, we're going to go into development, uh, there's a letter from Brett Pack, community planner in regards proposal subdivision file number four five six zero two two seven oh seven seven. For plot. Plot plan number two nine two one oh and fifty dash seventy-eight dash zero three, okay. I am going to excuse myself, as, uh, this is a project, uh, my son asked for a piece of land at a pretty park, and I said, if he wanted it, he had to do all the work, so he has gone through all the, the surveys, the approvals, met with the city, and I've actually had absolutely nothing to do with it, but I found a lot of information when I got to read it for the first time myself. Brian, can you come and take the chair while I, well, while you discuss this?
Please, Richard, go allow him.
Yeah, walk us through.
Yeah, so a, the provincial community planner, Brett Pack, that the department received an application for a subdivision with the other, mentioned lot, which is part of lot one five two nine two one zero, which is the lot, um, pretty campground, the proposed subdivision is located on probably no property, on the Joshua Drive, and we have number one. Intends to create, uh, one new smaller two acre lot, in order to develop a short, long-term calendar, that's in the adjacent campground. Uh, the whole document package, application form, letters, documents, etc., all party agreed in wire this evening. The community planning department circulated the application to numerous agencies, uh, no concerns were raised. Followed with call up, who provided in regards to proposal, the land title's office, based on the spotted with no comment, and they will need to two lot plan for subdivision. After the hydro, there are no these requirements, Bell MTS, there are no these requirements, conservation, that no concerns, and highways, no concerns. So the community planner asked per the process, and the planning act has submitted the application to the C U Thompson for a reapproval. And, uh, there is a comment from, from Mister Mack, and they're saying, well, we use the newly subdivided area, complies with the development plan, it does not comply with our current zoning bylaw. Uh, the area is owned as urban whole, but according to lodging is not permitted, it's not a current permitted use within that zone. Uh, so our recommendation is that the community will accept the application, move it to council agenda next week for, uh, resolution approval. As opposed to the current zoning bylaw, the revolution, like, through the condition, that the zoning bylaw mandate be required, probably final approval, five thirty. I added that line of importance, David, we are, uh, city of Thompson is a, is an approval process, in a through process, I guess, that the planning department has to file, the files, say. Everything from Brett is including your doctor. Thank you, Matt, it's pretty much done.
Well. Yeah, the, uh, certainly support the project, you and I have similar one, kind of, in, uh, I'd like to share in the council board. Uh, I'm just concerned a little bit about Suits. Uh, I know that we don't have an environment officer here that would like to comment in that regard, but we did have, uh, at one point, um, a freeze on new developments until demonstrate that we can manage the, uh, sewage generated currently. Uh, given that we had problems, I'm just wondering if this is not, nothing to worry about, or is this actually most strain our current capacity?
I believe that is a privately owned system, we could make note to the planner of the province that the concerns were raised on, uh, the Friday, the Tom. If there's not a good capacity, it's probably.
Good, Jim. Thank you. One other question.
Also, more of a clarification, um, I've read through all the documents a number of times, trying to understand what, what is actually folds. And our mayor on the way out said that she really had nothing to do with it, and someone else loaded the documents and. And our mayor on the way out said that she really had nothing to do with it and someone else wrote the documents and my reading. I'm looking confused because I don't see the person. That's looking to buy the land. That's filed. It doesn't doesn't show there. Am I am I right?
No, you're you're correct. So what I can. Definitely. Yep. Uh so the process is the registered owner, because it's probably whole pride, the register owner uh applies. And if the subdivision goes through, they receive the titles from both. Properties, both lots.
Right.
Then they they can have the. Uh internal process to sell that lot or give that lot to.
Once it's subdivided.
Once it's subdivided, so it's subdivided in the current law, it's subdivided in the current ministry uh holders.
Okay, so my question again is uh it wasn't the person that's looking to buy from the owners that applied the application. It was the owners, current owners of the cream park that applied to the application. Is that right?
The current registered owner filed the uh surveying department.
Right, so so that's why I was confused because that's not what I heard. That they had not did any favor. They actually went it on the weekend and. That truly for a loop, not saying I'm for against that this time. All I'm saying is that's not what I read. So I was confused about it. So thanks for clarifying that.
So it's very normal. It's not. Or tell and if we saw that. Would say that's.
So just to confirm that is modest and you know property, that is a privately owned property by by them. Because they're wanting to survive, that's why they're coming to the community planning department and then coming to us for approval settlement. But I think if I hear your question directly, you're asking will it remain in the tax base? The answer is yes.
Okay, but the tax base that better plan. They go. They. They will put these things off. They're going to be charged the taxes of. Exactly.
The lot will be assessed or whatever structures are put on it once it's constructed.
Yeah, so assessment's branch would come and assess whatever is there. Yeah. But this is the process. This is the first part just splitting the lot. Even before Kevin could go up, it still has to come back for variations and any of any other conditions that the planning branch would put on. So this is just the first set of saying, yes, that law can be split into two, or whatever the shape is there, that's it. If it wants to come back for a use, then the use has to come back as a separate request to council. The council can impose conditions on that variation or additional use at that time.
Those two are the minimum. Like, are there any additional uses on that property yet? Right now.
Not that I'm aware of.
And that's that's where I got the problem. If you read. The application. And that's institution that. That problem. Because it's not just. She's the storage. She's got. Split locks. And she's never told me for this council that commission other than that. Right now, I'd say. Ten percent of your income is stored.
I don't think this is the point you're right now, Alfred over and. So you then, yeah, so you have to remember, there's current bylaws, zoning bylaws that allow for things, there's past ones. And the one that uh applies is the one when you bought that property, that makes sense. So something called a preexisting nonconforming use. If there was a use in place there in the past that was allowed and currently isn't. The person who owned the property at the time can't be penalized. They're allowed to continue that development until they change what they're doing on their property. It's called preexisting nonconformal. So one example would be, say, you have a dog shelter or kennel in the middle of a downtown commercial area. Nowadays, that's not allowed according to your zoning bylaw. Because the people who own the dog shelter were there before it was changed, they're allowed to continue their dog shelter until they do some major renovation or some other change. So that's the concept of a preexisting use.
Okay, now. I like the idea of developing more things like this. But, you know, okay, storage, that's been there a long time. Well, I'm likely remember is when we installed the mid cap, it was. Now the storage keeps, but here we always don't allow.
I'm sorry. Or uh we're we're dealing with subdivision, right, at use, so.
Well, why are we going self divided?
If the use sorry or not.
We have to stick to subdivision, which is.
One division. One of the things there in subdivision application is the current use. Try doing the application for new paper.
But when it, once it's subdivided, we'd have to come to council and we'd make the. Decision on what can be used for. Am I not correct on that?
We're going to leave for the new law, right, 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 as it comes back and what's what's existing as a preexisting nonconformity. City manager spoke already.
So tonight, the only question is, is council in favor of allowing this developer to split their lot? That's really the only question to me. You have to stick to the process because. If you don't, you have to go and give an explanation to the crowd and government why you're not and and refer to why you're not. And remember, that person can always appeal to the miss board that the changes to the climate. So as the planner has said, there's nothing really there to say you can't split this lot. Uh there was a question that was asked by council found. That's a question that can be reported a plan that will be valid. But to say something about future use or any of that, that has to be dealt with at that time in the process.
That's. Well, my real. Uh, also, well.
Thank you. I just want to clarify this. Uh I think there's a two issue here, right? Number one is asking for subdivision. Number two is changing the condition, right? For over reserve.
No, tonight is only splitting that piece of law. So if you have this square drawing a line, both will remain urban whole. If you want to make a change in the future, that has to come as a separate process. So this is just drawing the line to split them off. That's the only thing that you're.
So so let me ask this question is uh under the planning district law. Allow or not allow?
Allow the subdivision.
Split the line.
It is in compliance with all the departments. So it's okay to split the line. This one needs to. Any other questions?
Also, just just for clarification, I think there is already basically all were saying we're going to move it to the next river council meeting.
That's correct. Resolution would come forward and say that council supports the subdivision proceeding. Uh council is raising a question about the Dr. Brett, and that's included in the resolution or not. Yeah. That's really it. It goes to uh the minister's official. The minister's official actually has the final say. And. It's not in my hands anymore, David. My bread. That's correct. It'll go through the rest of the subdivision process. And then once they made a determination, if it's favorable. The proponent can move ahead. They then have to come back to council and apply for uses all of others. That's council's prerogative.
That's fair. We're good. Okay. Is there anything we need further? Or we.
But there's a consensus that the resolution would come forward on Monday. That's really it. Okay, I don't see why not. You have a consensus to move forward. Yeah. Uh. Yeah.
Council landmark is that chair. Maybe so the the chair you have down there. There's not really a.
Okay, we'll move on to a memo. From the director of development and technical services on a land sale and development agreement twenty thousand present. Why?
Yeah, so back in March, uh council approved resolution to option the purchase of the lot thirty to walk in one oh six plan triple seven. Uh which is specific factors twenty thousand present. Uh the developer, which is Utah Building Supplies, is purchasing the land and developing a residential home. Uh current situation, uh the Smith Thompson, the developer has come to an agreement on the draft sale of land and development improvements for government. A full copy will be attached. I did add a note that this developer had two options. If you recall, one twenty thousand and one for riding an Uber, they're still working on the the approach for nine nine airport, so that will come later date. Um the full package of the agreement is in your briefing by the design for tonight includes the full plan of the building, uh the drainage plan, the landscaping plan. Uh site plan, et cetera. It's been all reviewed by our building inspector as well. He has no concerns at this point. So bringing this agreement forward to the community of all tonight, uh looking for acceptance and moving forward to council meeting next week.
Thank you. On your phone.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sirfance, you probably mentioned I I. It blew uh blew past me. How did we come by the seventeen thousand dollar purchase price? That was agreed to as part of your option. I understand you agree to it, but how do we get to that?
So your time negotiated that. Okay, so council uh the administration put forward the price as per the matrix. They counter operated council leading negotiation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
So looking for a consensus to move this forward on Monday.
Can we move it forward for Monday's meeting with the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Moves forward Monday's meeting. Okay. Next legislative review, the sponsorship package received from winter weather testing. Who's going to going to.
This was received as correspondence from the winter weather testing group. Um it's one of the requests. It looks like they're sending out to all the different agencies in town. Requesting sponsorship of a it's called a conference that's being split between the city of Winnipeg and the city of Thompson. Uh to try to promote winter weather testing in the world. Um so there's a request here to council. The council should be interested in to sponsor. One of these sponsorship opportunities. Well, I have.
Any comments on this? Cause, right.
Yeah, I was waiting for the chair of PCDC to make comment, but I'll go in. Um. I read through the whole package. In fact, I've been at other organizations who we deal with some of the sponsorship. You know, this again is a big piece of our written knowledge about the point in the future and and if the city of Thompson itself doesn't support it. And I wonder when you expect any other organization in Thompson to say, oh, yeah, I'll think that's sponsored or not. I think we need to, not sure what that is. Someone could bring forth something, but I think we certainly got to sponsor some event that's happening during that. So that the city shows its support in the economic development of this project that's going to take, you know, it'll be a few years, but it's going to bring a lot of. Money to this north, like not just Thompson, a lot of jobs eventually, and we certainly. Need to diversify in Thompson. Just know that about it. And it's part of doing that. So I would certainly. Look to someone or whatever. I don't say give away everything, but you got to do something. You got to support it. So, yeah, I'm in agreement to doing something.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, folks.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that wholeheartedly. It's just hard to say sometimes when it comes to house level. Love you, buddy, but uh sometimes that's not. Uh but he's a hundred percent right. They're going to take a leadership role and uh. Into weather testing and try and wrestle that from white horse and yellow. If we need to be uh out there and more local, so. I would certainly sponsor uh that's the right support any level sponsorship council wanted to uh move forward with.
Such a goal.
One is the advertising policy right now.
There is no policy on these such sponsor.
Okay, when there was sponsorship of the browser, we always learn.
They've been brought to us individually and we discussed them and then decided.
We always decide, but we turn most everybody down. We don't think most partners. Especially in tough times with it. I know this is beginning to happen, but so does the. There would be a current problem. Right? So on that range and journey. You know, what do we get like this? A little bit exposed. So I think we should stick to our. I have a dozen policy would be good to send anybody, any other organization you see. Right now, if I was any other organization and I want to provide and choose. Advertising book. I was done and jumped because if you advertise this, well, I'll come here to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my man. If I read this right, is it a some the same sub zero that you needed before?
No, this is uh the the word sub zero is in there at one point, but this committee is, I believe, separate from sub zero.
Yes.
So this one is funded by Prairie's can and a few other mine. And then some private investments, I understand.
Just want to clear that, yes, I thought maybe we did some zero. I just want to make sure.
It's a separate connection because it's separate. Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Thank you.
Yeah, uh for remembering the constantly the local corporation, I seriously hope that we. And so I stopped it all with the sponsor this. Probably. There were doubt which one we can. Can sponsor. Bring it forward. I look at it for. Can't walk with a good idea to do, but uh I do hope that we sponsor this because we need to show a lot of. We started with the local corporations, council, and make sure that it got way from us also to support it and make sure. Help if you diversify. They help fund with also.
So I'd request uh to check if there's a consensus to sponsor in a pretty place and possibly a request of that one level if if so.
Okay, uh who is uh willing to sponsor? Show hands. Both. Okay, it sounds like we're uh willing to sponsor. Do we have a a level in mind? I definitely uh winter weather testing isn't new to Thompson. It's been happening since the eighties and then it sort of went in a hiatus. And uh this is uh bringing it back uh basically full force. We've actually got people coming uh looking at us and checking us out. Last year, we had the boombox doing the sidewalks and that, and that brought more attention from other companies to us too. So I definitely think this conference is uh is going to uh definitely more we can get back in Thompson over this. Uh I appreciate it. So anybody, uh Brian or Les, you've been on the CDC, so we've all heard the same stories. So do you have a interest in what level that you would like to see just to start with? Les?
Because I know there's a lot of involved. I just want to say this first, a lot of involvement and there's companies. Uh even out of out of our city that's sponsoring some big money because they believe in what's what happened in Thompson. Say no to this, like saying no to economic development, don't just keep increasing the tax. Don't run the. You can't do that. This is an opportunity for Thompson, so I'd want to put forward the snowstorm sponsor.
Uh, okay.
Uh, thank you. Um. Terms of snowstorm hurts, to be honest. Um, I would think it would be in Thompson's best interest to uh introduce the keynote speaker. Really, it's not the value of dollars there. That's an issue for me. It's uh you're not likely to get as many people in the opening. Session as you would coming for the keynote speaker. I don't know who the keynote speaker is, but usually that attracts the most amount of people. Uh, so that would be the level that I would like to see just for the fact that you can. Talk to the the best. Possible time.
Okay, uh for the break next.
Call me and Mayor Spook. Um I I was going to suggest that Thompson, just because it seemed ready made for us, but I think Jeff, uh councillor fountain. Makes a very good point there about eyeballs and ears in the room. So I would agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Wong.
I also agree with the. I also agree with the keynote speaker sponsor, but the only thing I have is about the, uh. The conference passes, only three. To me, let's say this is good in Thompson, I would like to have the negotiation with them, see whether, uh, allow the letter of vision to attend. Should be, uh. I like to see the, uh, to be negotiated for the, uh, the conference passes. Should be allowed, let the official to attend, not just three. Away with three, right?
Okay, thank you. But he will, um, Earl, what you're, don't want any sponsorship?
No.
Deputy mayor?
Not much for this. Like we've already said, like, there is no budget for this. We'd have to find some. This is a one off that's on budget for some. We still have some. Qualification, actually, which is supposed to be. I'm sure we have to identify from the economic preserve or something.
Okay, thank you. And I agree, a keynote speaker is a key to get everybody's attention. It's one of the things that I always intend every. You want to be there and I'm sure that the keynote can plug in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I also agree with the keynote speaker to grab the attention, um, most thing for a buck. Thanks.
Thank you. So that is five for keynote speaker and I also will put my role forward for keynote speaker. Where is six of us in attendance? So we can move that forward. That can not be happened.
Yes.
Next, we have a letter from Monaco behind.
Believe this is just received for information. So it's medical behind who was saying that they're going to see renewal, they're required of the church of river diversion. To send us these overseas, but it's really a. So it's just just for information.
Paul for your. House for elsewhere, definitely right on our call favor. Meeting which.
Hey, everyone.